In city virtual city commission meeting is called order on Thursday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. We have a moment of silence to send her positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need her support. Please join me now in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here in Marine City in the county of St. Clair.
Thank you commissioners, if you could please identify the city and county that you're in, Commissioner Bryson.
I'm here in the city Marine City County of St. Clair.
And we got Commissioner Hendricks, thanks for the reminder. Commissioner Callahan.
I'm here in the city Marine City County of St. Clair.
Commissioner Clausen.
Joe Clausen here, city of Marine City, St. Clair County.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here, the city of Marine City, county of St. Clair.
Commissioner Ross.
Here, city of Marine City, county of St. Clair.
Mayor Verkaman is absent this evening and city manager Levin.
Here in the city Marine City, St. Clair County.
Okay, I need a motion to excuse Mayor Verkaman.
So moved, Callahan.
Support Brian Ross.
Um, Chris, do we need a roll call vote?
Yeah, we'll need a roll call vote on that, so we'll start with Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Hendrick, so moved.
Support Bill Clausen.
Any discussions, changes, deletions? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to public comment, anyone is welcome to address the city commission, please state your name and limit comments to five minutes. The commission will not respond, but will follow up as necessary. Anyone for public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay.
Hey Jake, this is Elaine, I would kind of like to make a comment, I noticed that Laura Scotch has been signing in and signing out, so I don't know if she wanted to make any type of comments or not, but just to let you know, it looks like she's having some difficulty connecting in.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep an eye out.
And we just have one other, Ann Cullen, that is coming in, and she's with the chamber.
And we're just wrapping up public comment, do you have anything to add? Okay, moving on to minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April first, twenty twenty one.
Hendrick, so moved.
Support.
Any discussions or changes? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Callahan.
Second, Ross.
Uh, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to financial business, I need a motion to approve expenditures including payroll for a hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars and one cent.
So moved, Commissioner Kreidler.
Support Bill Clausen.
We have a motion, support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Ross.
So sorry, the spacebar is not working to unmute today, yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, item A, city manager review resolution number zero zero two dash twenty twenty one, Elaine.
This is the final version of the annual city manager goals and objectives, this is something that we have talked about over the last couple of months, process moving forward for the commission to evaluate my performance and setting up the focused goals and objectives for the year twenty twenty one. I think that most of these are things that are attainable by the end of the year, obviously we're about four months into it, so I will do my best to carry out everything, so just looking for a motion to approve this as is.
Um, this is Commissioner Hendrick, I mean, we were supposed to be allowed to add or update based on items that we thought may be of value for this particular time, were we not?
No one got a hold of me during the period before the packets went out to discuss changes.
Well, I have a list, but nobody said when we had to turn it in, so. Since this is a new process, I'm just kind of concerned because it's kind of taken a little bit, but I've got, I've got twenty items on here that I'd like to see looked at, a lot of these I think can be handled within the same amount of time, but I think they're items that are of value, so Bob, how do we deal with this?
Well Lisa, do you have your list, this is your list?
Yep, I got it written and typed up, I can send it to her.
Well, what we could do is maybe you could walk through that list, at least just state the items on the list, so the other commissioners can hear, and then I guess what we could do is bring this back for final approval at the next meeting, which we, you know, which is fine, but you know, at some point, all of the commissioners have to be on board with the priorities, because you know, one can be at the expense of another, so they should have an opportunity to hear your list and they should see the list.
Correct, yes, and then what we talked about the last time was bringing them to this particular meeting, that's what I remember the last time, so I put mine together, I don't have a problem with sharing all this and sending this out, so that they can all have time to review and see how they feel about it, most of these are all issues, I didn't want to waste all the time in here, but I mean, I can go through some of them, but I don't have any problem emailing this out to everybody.
Why don't you just read them and then get them out to everybody, the other commissioners can look at them between now and the next meeting, and remember, as a collective group, you have to decide on this list, because like I said, you know, everybody has to be on board with the same list.
Correct, I was hoping that more people would have lists, but I know I'm one of those types that come up with this stuff, all right, so you want me to start, or do you want to do a motion on the, are we going to do anything with the resolution, or do we want to do this first?
You know, I'm actually, hey Bob, I'm actually fine if we just email out the list to everyone for consideration for the next meeting, and then that way we can, that way we can.
It'll give them more time.
Yeah, my vote was going to be to table.
Yeah.
Yeah, but commissioners, just be aware, you know, there only so many things can be on the list, obviously, right?
Right. I think we need the time to digest one another's.
Unless it's a list of things you need, unless it's a list of things you need to do at your home, so this list has to be achievable, doable, and practical, so you want to make sure that your highest priorities get on there, and that you have input into what those highest priorities are, one commissioner may feel very strongly about one thing, and not as strongly about something else, and vice versa for the next person, so those have to be aired out and reduced to a final list, which we really do need, we really do need to do at the next meeting, and that'll give the city manager very clear and objective criteria to work on and focus on, bear in mind, the city manager has a list of charter-bound, you know, regular duties, she's the head of the department, you know, she manages the department heads and things of that nature, and carries on the office activities, so your out of the box thinking as commissioners is really the policy direction you would like to see the manager focusing on, and so Lisa, if you could circulate those, other commissioners may agree or disagree, you know, with some or more, or a few of them, and then we should emerge with a final list.
Okay, Elaine.
Yeah.
When would you, if, if, if we want to have a complete list of all the commissioners' wants, cares, et cetera, for this, by, for the next meeting, when would you need it to get into the meeting packet for our next meeting?
So we are very fortunate that this time we are in a window where we have a fifth Thursday, so if there are any other commissioners that maybe had a misunderstanding about the process, if you want to email your, your goals and objectives to me directly, and then I can combine everything and send it out to everyone as part of the packet, or prior to that, I'll be glad to do that, I would think if you want me to send it out prior to the packet, I would think next Wednesday would be a good deadline.
Okay.
Otherwise, if you want to have them do the following Wednesday, and I will just include all of those in the resolution for the packet, and then we can discuss it the next meeting.
So my, you know, I'm just putting this out there for everyone, my suggestion would be to have everyone email Elaine any, whatever they, their lists, whatever, whatever they'd like to, for us to consider by next Wednesday, the twenty first. After that, let's get them compiled, emailed out to everyone, and just reminder, we can't discuss these things over email because of the open meetings act, but let's get it out to everyone, that way we have a couple, a week, week and a half to chew on it, and then be prepared for our first meeting in May, to go through them and rack and stack them and figure out what's achievable and what's not, I mean, does that make sense?
Makes, makes good sense, Jacob.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
No.
No, and do we need one at this point?
No, there's no action, no action, no action is required.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion regarding the city manager review?
Yes, this is Commissioner Hendrick, just so that we don't get bogged down, I mean, I want to keep this moving along, but then the next issue is going to be that we need to make sure that we develop, once we get this list complete, a way to go through it when the time comes and rate it and do whatever, so we want to do that ahead of time and not wait till the last minute for that also.
Agreed.
Okay, so everyone have their lists of items that like to see included in this resolution to Elaine by next Wednesday, please? If there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business, item A, temporary traffic engineer order T T twenty one zero 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 one.
This is a traffic order that revolves around the Hidden Harbor Plan Development over at the end of Metropolis, it is necessary for the developer to be able to get access for the intersection and starting to put in that temporary road, and to be able to get access, because Sixth Street is pretty tight, he needs to have a couple weeks where there's no parking on the street during the, during the two week period, so that they can get their big trucks in to be able to get everything all ready, the order from Chief Heslop is from Monday, May seventeenth to Friday, May twenty eighth.
Question. I realize that he's got to get some of this in there, but are you requiring a bond in case he does any damage to the street within that two weeks?
We are.
And how will the, how will the people in that neighborhood be notified?
There'll be signs going up, I can talk to Mike or Jim about putting out some type of flyer or something on their doors.
Okay. You might want to even put it within, I know this traffic control says something, but it doesn't really specify why we're doing it, and it would have been more, if that would have been in there.
Okay, so I need a motion regarding the temporary traffic engineer order.
So moved, Callahan.
Support Bill Clausen.
We have a motion, support, any further discussion?
One more thing, Elaine, is this, this is just a two week thing, and then there won't be any more, correct?
That is correct.
Then he'll be working on the other road, and then they'll be using that to come in.
Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure, thanks.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving down to item ten B, the police department generator.
The generator over at the police department's really been having problems for a couple of years, they really started noticing it for the most part, I think over about the last six months or so, that it wasn't running its regular weekly tests, they did have someone come in and check the unit, it does need to have a flywheel replaced, there is a temporary generator there right now that's on loan, at no cost to us, the flywheel replacement's going to be thirty five hundred, based upon the time that it's going to take to get a new generator, we have to get this fixed no matter what, so we have the two quotes that we were able to obtain, if you take a look at the first quote from ACDC Electrical, the first two line items are actually two optional generators, so if you take one out versus the other, those bids are twenty thousand, three thirty eight, or twenty thousand, five twenty nine, the bid that we received from Sideline Electric is twenty one thousand, two fifty, this is the recommended one from Chief Heslop, this is something that obviously is a pretty urgent need, without the generator, if we get into issues with power, the police department won't be able to run their computers, our email server will be down, and with the lead time on these generators, we're looking to waive competitive bidding and approve the sideline electric bid.
Elaine, do we need to also approve the cost for repairing the existing unit for the flywheel?
No, that actually just, that actually just goes under regular repairs and maintenance.
Okay.
Elaine, this is Lisa, I did the math also on this, I'm assuming that Sideline, because he's adding a few extras things on here, that's why his is just a little tad higher?
Um, I'm not really sure about that, this is.
He's adding a block heater, a battery warmer, he's adding a brownout kit, and a few other things, I didn't see any of that listed on the first guys, but.
Yeah, this was something that Mike and Jim had both decided that the one from Sideline Electric was the better option, and that was the recommendation.
Okay, so we'll have to waive competitive bidding first, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Okay, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
So moved, Hendrick.
Support Bill Clausen.
Okay, any further discussion just on waiving competitive bidding?
Well, I'd like to make a thing that Sideline Electric is also a local, not somebody from the west side or way up and get to us, so if something happens, and I do have that heating unit on mine, it saves the battery, it's worth the money.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next I need a motion to approve the purchase of the generator from Sideline Electric for twenty one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Hendrick, so moved.
Support Bill Clausen.
We have a motion and support, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to city managers' report.
I attended E D A meeting, planning commission, Scotts, and also held a department head meeting since my last notification, the stay at home work order has been extended to October fourteenth, one thing about that is that the notice for it does say that it is subject to change, so they did six months, but hoping we will have that lifted earlier than that. I attended a county led meeting with other local communities about a twenty six mile corridor, potential infrastructure improvements, utilizing some federal funding that the county will be getting, one of the things that they're really looking at from the perspective of the E D A is some growth from both jobs and people living and commuting into the area. High Tech has a new password policy that they're pushing out for improved security, and emails either have been or will be sent out to commissioners to change their, I'm sorry, change their passwords according to this policy, the speed signs are up and running, there are several different modes for these speed signs, so just because you see them up and you may not see any number or anything on them, doesn't mean that they're not functioning, they're still collecting some data, Tractor Supply Company is close to the final building approval, actually interestingly enough, according to Google, their plans are to be open on May eighth, the D P W has done some seawall repairs to Mariner Park, they're going to be looking to see if they can do some of the seawall repairs at the end of St. Clair Street as well, over at two sixty South Parker, High Tech and Dyke Security have been working on their installations, we're working on finalizing the color selections for floor and countertop, we'll also be looking at window coverings in the near future, the water plant, we have had some staffing issues there from someone that had left, and one of the requirements for the plant is that people maintain certain license levels, there's a debatable violation that Eagle is talking and working with, like, Fleece and Van de Brink, our consultant that manages the plants on, there were no issues with the water, it just comes down to paperwork and licensing, so I am in the loop on that, we may or may not have to just send out a notification letter about the issue with the certification, everything is being fully covered by Fleece and Van de Brink right now as far as staffing requirements. Wanted to remind everyone about the budget workshop next Monday, and potentially if we need it, Tuesday night at six P M., I am going to be getting my second COVID shot on Sunday, so if for some reason I am under the weather on Monday, I have passed on instructions for running the Zoom meeting to Megan, so she hopefully will be ready and willing, otherwise I may wind up running it from home if I'm not feeling okay, looking at the infrastructure subcommittee, there's an M dot grant that's coming out, and I'd like to get a subcommittee back together for the infrastructure group, I'm not sure if we want to go with the existing people that we have, or appoint some new people on that, but at the very latest, I would want to have people in place for our next meeting, and that is all I have.
Okay, any questions for Elaine?
No questions, but I guess I would say keep the same group of people, since they're already familiar with what's been going on, it makes more sense.
We've got Jake and Joe on the, Jake and Joe on the line, I think that they were both involved, hopefully they'd still be interested in continuing to serve.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to continue on with that.
This is Joe, I'm available too.
Okay, any other questions for Elaine?
Yeah, Bill Clausen, I want to know why the, what security is so big that we have to have a twenty digit password?
Oh, you know, this is something that High Tech takes very seriously, is security and trying to make sure that our systems don't get hacked, one of the things with, with your emails as opposed to the regular staff, we're required to have them updated on a periodic basis, with commissioners, because it's an elected position, and you aren't in the office, you're not accessing the server, this was a solution that they came up with, where you can have your password, enter it once, and not have to deal with it again.
Yeah, I understood that, but I also wondered, what is the high security here? What is it that we have that's so high security?
I'm sure Bob can probably speak to this, because I know that they had their system hacked, and if you have your, your email or system hacked, it's a gateway in, and that is how people unfortunately get a hold of your accounts and hold them for ransom for some large amount.
Yeah, and we have, we have, we have data. Yeah, and we have, we have, we have data, the city maintains data, personal data, tax data, other information that needs to be secured. Bill, I know 20 digits for a password seems unreasonable, but as I understand it, it makes it so we never have to change it.
Well, I've got other units and they have the same problem. They haven't got hacked and stuff, but it just seems like it's overkill. And I understand that they're going to, there's a way they're going to let us have the password so we can remember it. But other people who have jobs and places where they have to remember a password, and you have four or five places and trying to keep up the passwords, especially if they want to every 30 days.
You need a password just to do anything these days. It's a bit burdensome. I agree with it.
Thank you.
Anything else for Elaine? Hearing none, we'll move on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports. Lisa, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I have, Joe Slankster did start as our fire chief. It's a, it's a new thing for him, having only worked one job instead of two all the time, but he's doing a good job. And hopefully, we'll be able to get more firefighters in there and won't have to keep adding staff. But Joe's there full-time every, for five days a week. So if anybody needs to get ahold of him, you can get ahold of him now at the hall. Thanks.
Okay, Wendy?
I'm good this evening. Thank you.
Hey, Bill, anything?
Well, the planning commission met now after five months, and we had some discussions and it went over the annual report. And you'll be getting that back. And there was some discussion about the the new business that's going to, the old business and apartments next to the hotel. And that's all we discussed. And I have nothing else.
Hey, John?
I had a meeting with SEMCOG today and just kind of got introduced to the procedures and different options for our city to be able to access some funding for different trail plans and other, you know, safe routes to school initiative funding. And I'm hoping to, you know, I look forward to in the future being able to tap into some of those resources for our city.
Okay, and last but not least, Brian?
Hey, I received my first COVID vaccine yesterday, and I am a little in pain right now, but not bad. I mean, you know, it's the arm pain like tetanus shot and, you know, like 99-degree fever, but low-grade fever. Just, you know, that's apparently what we're to expect, and my wife had similar symptoms as well. But I just want to say, the St. Clair County Health Department, this was done at the Knights Club, KNIGHTS in Marysville. It was exceedingly organized, very well-run, just very proud of our small county and the way that we were able to organize and coordinate such a difficult thing. So kudos to the St. Clair County Health Department and all that were involved in that. And I go in for my next vaccine on May 6th. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting that night.
Okay, I have nothing. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second, Brian Ross.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.